So it is 7:05, and at this time I'd like to call to order the Tuxbury Finance Committee public hearing for March 30, 2022. And at this time, I'd like to ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I believe this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everybody. Okay, so I have a little spiel here. So the public hearing, this is a meeting that we have for anyone from the general public to ask any questions they might have regarding the warrant articles for the annual and special town meetings that will be held in the first week of May. The Finance Committee has already reviewed the warrant articles with the town manager and have been reviewing town department budgets with the town manager and department heads for the past couple of months. The committee may or may not have any questions for the town manager at this time. Tonight is more for anyone from the Tuxbury community to ask any questions they may have regarding departmental budgets or any of the warrant articles. So this is how it will work. We're going to address each warrant article individually. Any residents that would like to speak on an article will just come up to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and they can ask questions or make comments. After resident questions are addressed, I will open it up for the committee to ask questions. And after discussion is completed, the Finance Committee will vote on our recommendation as to how to proceed on the article at town meeting. Can everybody hear me okay? Just sound check? Yeah? All right, good. Okay, so first, I will now look for a motion to waive the reading of the warrant articles.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Dave Rich. I will take a -- we do have one member that is online, so I'm going to take a roll call vote. Susan, how do you vote online? Rich LaVassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Asomorion?
Aye.
And Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. Okay. We do have one petition article.
Petition.
Which number is it? Do you know, Rich?
You have two petition articles. The first one is Article 24.
Is that person here?
Laura Kaplan.
Okay, okay, good, great. So I would look for a motion to take the petition article 24 and...
31.
Is that the right number?
I'll make that motion.
Out of order and go first.
I'll make that motion.
Rich for the motion.
Second.
And Jason. Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. LaVassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Asomorion?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, so we will take... I forget the number already. 24 first and then 31.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
I was wondering how the order was going to come. Thank you so much.
You want to make it wait till then?
Yeah.
Did you need anything further or anything presenting for this article? I know you just voted and everything, but...
No, we just voted to take the...
Okay.
So if you want to just give a quick... If you have any background or if you just want to...
No, I think the executive summary kind of summarizes it. Just for the safety of all town residents, to just have vehicles that are not utilized for commuting but for recreational use. I hope someday myself I'll have one, and I would not public and park it in a public roadway because it adheres to pedestrians, people walking, any bicycle in. It's just a real issue. It's a danger. So that's the reason and for my putting this article forward to the board. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any residents with any questions on this article? Seeing none, any questions from the committee?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. I understand what you're trying to do, but one of the things that I have a question on is what will be the official definition of a recreational vehicle?
Okay.
I mean, in instance, we all think of recreational vehicles as these big campers, but that may not necessarily be the condition for all vehicles.
Okay.
So could there be some vehicles that could be, oh, that's a recreational vehicle, and it's not necessarily an official definition of one? How do people not get essentially pinned for saying, oh, that's a recreational vehicle? What's the actual definition the town will officially use for that? Or the police for that matter?
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought it was clear. In the paragraph above, the third sentence where it says recreational vehicles include... Does that... Is that not sufficient, do you feel? This is my first time writing an article, so I needed a lot of assistance. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe the article speaks to RVs, trailers. It looks like four-wheel RVs, like the police have those types of things for going through. And some people use them in the winter and stuff like that. I would assume snowmobiles. I would assume any vehicle that's... has to be registered. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, I just... I guess what I was thinking was any vehicle that's not really utilized for, you know, like a vehicle, like a car?
Yeah.
For example, a boat or the all-terrain ones, the RVs, trailers. But I didn't realize I should have been more clear on that. I apologize.
Yeah, my concern is the "and" other vehicles that are not used for everyday commuting. That's really broad.
Okay.
And I don't really know how that could be interpreted by someone who wants to point out a neighbor that has a vehicle that may not be used for everyday commuting. I mean, what does that mean?
So do you think I should amend the article and remove that?
I don't want to tell you how to word your article. I'm just saying that when it comes to town meeting, some people may raise an eyebrow when they see that and say, vehicles that are not used for everyday commuting, that aren't necessarily the true definition of a recreational vehicle.
Okay, so I will make an amendment on that. I appreciate your input.
And the other thing is, it states overnight parking, which could be one day. But in the executive summary, any vehicle that is being stored on public roadways... And when I hear "stored," I think of long-term, it's going to be for an entire season or, you know, indefinitely. Whereas overnight parking, if someone just happened to have something and it was parked overnight because they were visiting, and then it was gone the next day, are they going to be subject to being towed or fined for being there one day?
Well, above the last part of the article, after one morning of violation of said bylaw within 24 hours, so meaning if it's overnight one night, I get it, you want to unload the trailer or the RV, put it into your storage facility, whatever. But it has been my experience and notice that that's not the case. And so that's one of the reasons for this article. You know, a public roadway should not be used to store them for weeks, months. I think if it's clear that, you know, 24 hours is one thing to unload your vehicles, definitely a need and acceptable, but after that, I think it's really being abusive of the public roadways to park your RV or your trailer on a public roadway.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one more.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm just looking up the definition of a recreational vehicle in the Mass General laws. And it says, "A recreational vehicle or off-highway vehicle is any motor vehicle designed or modified for use over unimproved terrain for recreation or pleasure while not on a public way." This includes all-terrain vehicles, off-highway motorcycles, dirt bikes, and recreation utility vehicles. Also included are all-registered motor vehicles when operated off a public way. I can send a link to this, to these definitions, if you'd like. If you want to modify, I'm not saying you have to do a thing, in your opinion, but I'm just saying Massachusetts has a definition of what a recreational vehicle, all-terrain vehicle is. So if you'd like, I'd send it to you.
That's not parked on a public roadway, was what was written in there too, so that's interesting.
And Dave, you asked about overnight versus...
Being stored.
Being stored.
Right.
So overnight, I know we have an overnight parking ban in town from November to May.
Right.
Your article seeks to increase, change that to, for recreational vehicles to all the time, all year, correct?
Correct.
Good.
Especially the way Mother Nature is on her calendar.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. And Rich, you might want to move your mic a little closer. I don't know if they at home, if they can hear you or not. So typically on resident petition articles, we don't really make a recommendation, but how does... How do we want to proceed here?
I actually have no recommendation, Mr. Chairman, so I could make a motion of no recommendation.
Okay. Dave with a motion.
I'll second for discussion. Is it no recommendation or would be deferred to town meeting?
Last time we made a recommendation or we made a motion of to make no recommendation. Blah. So we didn't... I don't think we said defer to town meeting. I think we said specifically no recommendation.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. I'll start with Susan on the phone or online.
Aye.
Mr. LaVassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Asomorion?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. And thank you for coming down.
Okay.
Ma'am, if you want to write your email address down for me, I'll email you that link.
Oh, sure. I'm happy to do that. I appreciate any information. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to...
Just give the broader definition.
Thank you for coming in. Could you state your name and address?
My name is Gora Banerjee. And what else do I...
An address?
My home address is 36 Kilgrim Drive, Winchester, Mass.
Okay. Thank you. 31. All right, do you want to explain what your article is trying to do?
Simply, I own a piece of land in Tuxbury, 10.5 acres of land, and this house besides that, a single family. Do I have five minutes to say more things?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Otherwise it wouldn't mean much. So 1986, before many of you were born...
Oh, no.
I just lost a very good job, and I was in a very vulnerable situation, trying to figure out what to do next in my life, and I fell into the hands of two crooks. They sold me this property for $950,000. I didn't get clear title even. They bribed my lawyer. He was supposed to give me a certificate, paid $7,000 to him. Following the closing, 3rd of July, 1986, 10 days later, I see his book photograph in Boston Globe. He was going to jail, my lawyer. They bribed my lawyer. I had to pay $470,000 more, which I didn't have, to clear the title. Took me two and a half years to do that, land court and all that. Then they started, the previous owners, they started building two houses on Maple Street. This is just finished the foundation. That's when me, stupid me, jumped in into this. So I finished those two houses. Lot of things happened in between for over six months. I won't bother you with those things. Lot of serious problems. They told me there is sewer on the street. They went into my head and they just mesmerized me. I just believed everything they said. Didn't check anything. I didn't have anyone to check anyway. They told me there is sewer on the street, just outside those houses. Plumbers, they did the rough plumbing, and this is, Gora, where is the sewer line? She says, on the street. She says, no such thing here. So trouble started from there on, very big ones. It will be, it's unbelievable kind of stuff. I was very nervous. I thought I was a project manager at my job. I thought I would hire good people and borrow money and get a living out of this. Nothing of that sort happened. I realized I have to know myself, what am I doing? I didn't. Even until December of this year, I had serious problems. The Board of Health forced me to demolish the two structures in the back of this property, a small little house, a barn, and then a small apartment attached to it. Even that was unforeseen, and I spent $20,000 that I had to borrow again. So it went on and on and on. I tried to sell the property. The only people who could buy it are the developers, big developers in town. And one of them offered me not even half of my cost, forget my sufferings, for 36 years and more. So my only way out now is to rezone this property to a multifamily zone, the 55-plus type of thing, because the town, I understand, doesn't allow any more apartments, condos, no big houses, just two-bedroomed, freestanding homes. So if I am able to rezone the property, I could get some of my money back. Me and my wife worked for all these many years, very hard, and everything we could save, we put into this property to save it. So in the beginning, no bank, banks were not lending me money because they told me, you have no experience. Then I started to realize, what am I in for? So I borrowed money from a private financing company at 15% interest for 10 years, and I've been paying. Since then, I refinanced, paying mortgage, the real estate taxes, and many, many huge expenses. So my only way out now, rezone it and get some of my money back and pay off my debts. So I've been going around, house to house in Tuxbury, begging around for votes for the town meeting.
Okay. I want to ask Steve a question. If you don't mind, Mr. Sadwick? Thank you. With the rezoning or whatever, the bylaw changes, that piece of property won't change. Right now, it's zoned residential, right?
Correct. So what's proposed, the two articles that would be before Mr. Banerjee's? One, the zoning bylaw itself. The other one would change the map to reflect the districts in the new zoning bylaw. What he's looking to do, I think sequentially would work if it was approved, that the new map could have this incorporated into it after the new map is voted first, and then this one's brought up.
Right.
But the new map does not reflect what Mr. Banerjee is proposing right now.
Okay, thank you. So is there anybody, any residents that would like to ask any questions? Not seeing any. Anybody from the committee?
Yes, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Rich.
So the two houses that are...
Only one now. I sold the other one.
Okay, so...
That'd be close.
Well, the one with the Greek columns?
That has been sold.
That's been sold.
In 2001.
Okay.
And I'd invested that money in a very good blue stock, old blue chip stock. Went to zero.
Seen a lot of those. Okay. So I guess this is a question for... Another question for Steve. Sorry, Steve. Would there be a limit of what types of property could go on it if we rezoned it to multifamily dwelling? If it were to be...
Let me just say that the density would be capped at 10 acres per acre. So that would be the maximum you could get there. I don't know, how many acres is it?
Altogether, 10.5 plus this house. 11.5 altogether.
So possibly 77 units could go there?
Okay.
I would abide by every single law of the town. I never broke any law. I got few speeding tickets, yes, but never, ever broke any law, and I would never do that at all either. Everything the town official will tell me, I'll do.
That's the only question I have.
Okay.
No, no questions.
Go ahead, Dave.
Mr. Banerjee, has the planning board reviewed and voted on this?
I haven't gotten that far yet.
So no neighbors have had a chance to voice their opinion on it?
No.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay, thank you. Jason, any questions? Any questions? No?
No.
Okay. I don't think I have any questions either. I think as a comment, I would like to wait to see what the planning board has to say about it before we make any kind of recommendation. So if that's...
I would motion to defer to the planning board. I would like to hear their opinion, and that also gives the opportunity for neighbors to talk. I have no opposition to this. It's just that without going through planning board review, hearing their approval or concerns, and having neighbors have the opportunity to voice their opinion.
So can we change the motion to postpone a recommendation on this until a meeting, one of our meetings after the planning board has theirs?
So moved.
All right. And second by Jason, all right.
Yeah, they're meeting on April 11th, I think.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'll start with Susan online.
Aye.
All right, Mr. LaVassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Asomorion?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. So we will take this up at our next meeting after the planning board meeting. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah, and good luck.
So I would be informed when... Would I be required to come or...
I would suggest you do.
Steve, like he did this time, he would inform me?
Yeah, right now, I believe it's scheduled for April 11th. Yeah, I don't know. But that's just...
I'm sorry?
Right now, I believe it's scheduled for April 11th.
Okay.
But that's just a guess. I can look it up on the town...
It's on the town website, sir.
Yeah, it's on the town website.
Okay, so we'll... Thank you. Go back to the beginning of the warrant article. I don't think we make any kind of recommendation on Article 1, right? It's just the elections?
Not just. We don't want to say just the election, but...
It's the very important election happening this Saturday. Everybody get out and vote.
Get out and vote.
So Article 2.
Article 2 is, Mr. Chairman, sets the salaries for elected officials. Nothing has changed.
Okay, do we have any residents that want to ask questions? Not seeing any. Anybody on the committee? No?
No.
Okay, look for a motion on Article 2.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, Dave, Rich. Roll call vote, Susan.
Aye.
Mr. LaVassier?
Aye.
Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Asomorion?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Article 3-25.
This is for the acceptance of the town reports, which will be available online prior to town meeting.
Okay, any questions from residents? Not seeing any. Committee? Motion?
Moved.
Motion to approve. Dave?
Second.
Rich, second. Roll call vote, Susan.
Aye.
Mr. LaVassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye as well.
Mr. Asomorion?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, 6-0. Okay. Article 326.
This allows, authorizes the town manager to enter into lease purchase agreements up to five years. We haven't done any recently, but just...
Okay. Any residential questions? Nope. Committee questions? Motion?
So moved.
Adopt?
Second.
Dave, Rich. Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. LaVassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Asomorion?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well, 6-0. 327.
This is the annual vote for appropriating Chapter 90 funds that the DPW uses for roadway improvements to include roadway paving and reconstruction, sidewalks, and drainage.
Okay. Any questions from the residents? Seeing none. Any from the committee? Any motions?
So moved.
Rich, second. Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. LaVassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Asomorion?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, 6-0. Article 328.
This is the standard authorization for revolving funds in the community. None of them have changed, and they've been updated to any changes from last town meeting.
Okay, any questions, resident questions? Nope. Any committee? Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
Motion from Dave, second by Rich. Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. LaVassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Asomorion?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Richard, I was wondering, do you want to present maybe for anybody on TV that might not actually have downloaded the warrant? Because it's only online, right?
Yeah, I'm going to put it on.
Yeah, if you don't mind. It just occurred to me that we haven't mailed them out or anything. It just occurred to me that we haven't mailed them out or anything.
How's that?
There you go, good. Okay, Article Four.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to give a high level review of the warrant, the budget. So. Fiscal year 2023 is being recommended to be. That is prior to allocations to various departments. When we add in all the allocations from water and sewer and cable, from cable TV, the net budget for FY23 is $127,110,820. The budget for FY23, prior to allocations, will increase $3,540,000. Again, prior to allocations, the town budget will increase $1,591,028. This includes salaries increasing $745,065. Within that salary increase, that includes a 2.25% cost of living increase for employees. It includes longevity increases and any other contractual obligations. That amount includes retirement buybacks that total $232,890. It includes an increase in election salaries of $64,600 due to the number of elections next year and the increased workload for elections. There are no new positions within this salary budget. And just as a note, all the information I'm going to talk to tonight will be in the handout. Everything I'm speaking to, the detail, balances and funds, revenue appropriations, will all be in the handout. The operating budget for the town side budget is decreasing $7,737, but there were some major changes within the operating expenses for the town side budget. Streetlights was the biggest impact. It decreased $400,483. Much of that was due to the payment of a short term borrowing that we had for the streetlight conversion to LED. We're also seeing a savings in the actual streetlight energy supply. On the increase side for operating, just to, just to name a few, the solid waste. Budget will be increasing $134,575. That's based on a 3% increase in our contract with Republic Services. And our disposal of solid waste per ton will increase from $90 per ton for disposal to $93.60. Just other areas, just to note, the police operating budget is increasing $61,957, mainly for different expenses within the budget. The DPW fleet operating budget is increasing $59,350, mainly because of the increased cost in fuel. Elections will again be increasing $28,850, and that's due to the increased. Services or. Elections next year, plus the number of elections next year. We have a state primary and a state election. Unclassified budgets within the town budget are increasing $853,990. Health insurance is within that budget, and that will be increasing $61,471, which is a 5% increase in premiums, plus projected new enrollment. Non exempt debt service under unclassifieds will be increasing $210,819. And that's to fund debt service for a new DPW school maintenance facility. We have set aside enough debt service in the general fund as well as enterprise funds to borrow $25 million to go to. DPW school maintenance facility. We will not be bringing the bond authorization forward in May, but we will be bringing it forward in October. As well as transfers from any reserves that the town has to help pay for the project. But we wanted to set the money aside within the overall town budget in anticipation of bringing the project forward in October. Right now, the project, based on a presentation made to the Board of Selectmen last night, is projected to cost $29.5 million. Which is a combination renovation of the existing facility and building new facilities on the current site of the DPW. We're still refining that budget. We're still refining the conceptual plan before we go to final design. Aside in the budget in anticipation of the project coming forward in October. Other areas of unclassified, just to note, middlesex retirement is increasing $503,043, which is a 4%, 4.66% increase. That's based on the assessment for middlesex retirements, actuarial value, actuarial valuation of our system. Property and liability insurance is increasing $92,451 on the town side. That's a 10% increase in the premium, plus adding the new center station. To our insurance inventory. Capital outlays have decreased overall $290. That's mainly due to facilities seeing a decrease in their capital outlay budget by $35,000. But we did see an increase in the elections capital outlay. Dollars for a new tabulator and pole pad, and $26,510 increase in police capital outlay for an additional cruiser and replacement of firearms. Finally, on the town side, we did see an increase in the allocations that help offset the town budget. allocations increased $111,690. Of that, water increased, water allocations increased $78,599. Sewer allocations increased $31,301, and the cable allocation increased $1,790. When you take into consideration the net, the allocations that help offset some town budgets, the town budget increased net the allocations $1,479. $79,338. Any questions on the town budget before I jump to the school?
Mr. Montoya, could you just highlight the actual, so people watching on TV know, these savings that we. Had on the streetlight program? That was.
Sure.
Huge number.
Yeah, let me just go. So streetlights are decreasing overall. A little over $400,000, but let me go to their budget. It's decreasing $400,483. A good portion of that is because of the. The. Payment of the short term borrowing that we did for the LED convert. Normal years, the streetlight budget was approximately $180,000 for normal supply in electricity. Well, because we converted to LED, we can now, we're now budgeting $72,750 for streetlights. So that's the savings that we're generating from changing to LED. Now, this is our first year doing it that we're currently in, the $72,750 is a projection. Within that budget, we do have $10,000 set aside for. We have to maintain the streetlights. We have $10,000 set aside for maintaining the streetlights. Plus, we have somewhere in the vicinity of $5,000 set aside for a software that helps us main, operate the streetlights. We can. Determine how bright a streetlight is, how, you know, we can illuminate them. We want to, and we can really play some really interesting games with people if we wanted to. That's all, but that, so that software is in there too. So when you look at the actual cost of streetlight supply, it's closer to, you know, $65,000 a year instead of the 180. So it was a great savings. Thank you.
That's great. The other thing I would comment for anybody watching this at a later time or watching from home, obviously, looking through the, the budget through the warrant article is really hard to know, like. What's been added, what's been subtracted and all that, but you have a really good presentation to the Board of Selectmen from, I think, the January 11th meeting, if I'm correct? If I'm not correct, that has a good summary, actually kind of near the end of the presentation, so you're going to have to get through like 40 pages, but. That have been added, as well as a list of things that are our priorities, but didn't quite make it into the budget. So there's, there's a whole list of things that didn't quite make the cut this time, but are on our list. So that's, that's also good to sort of review if you're reviewing the budget.
And the plan is to, we have some edits to make to the warrants that are online. We'll make those and upload new warrants after tonight in case there are any changes. We plan to send the warrant to the printer on Friday to get printed and mailed out hopefully within the next week to 10 days. I hope to finish the handout for town meeting once we complete tonight's hearing, just in case there are any comments, changes, thoughts. And we'll get that out online, so people have that well ahead of town meeting, and we're well, we're well ahead of schedule, and people should have plenty of time to review the warrant and any information, any. Just quickly to finish Article Four, the school budget increased $1,464,255. That includes a salary increase of $959,155. School operating budgets increased $140,743. There are no changes to the capital outlay budget for the schools. Fixed costs were similar to the town. The overall increase was $364,357. Again, health insurance had a 5% premium increase, plus new enrollment projections, so school health increased $86,685. Their assessment for retirement, at middlesex retirement, increased $107,675. On the actuarial of, actuarial valuation, that was a 6.6% increase. Property and liability had a large increase of $157,891. The premium itself increased 10%, but we had to add the new elementary school for FY23 coming online. In addition to the school budget, the budget overall saw an increase to Shawshank Tech's assessment in the amount of $526, $26,329. We saw a decrease in the assessment for Essex Aggie that decreased $9,371. And then finally, town school exempt debt, these are all of the projects that were voted on by the residents to exempt from Proposition Two and a Half. Will be decreasing $517,578. Just one last thing on the budget, the budgets that we're appropriating, funding for the budget will come from the normal revenues within the town. We will be increasing taxes to the two and a half levy limit, plus we're projecting new growth of $850,000 in FY23. We're anticipating, based on the levy increase, that is projected to be $2572,729. We're projecting an average tax bill increasing $190. Now, that's based on the current shift that we have in place between residential. That's based on the current values not moving. And all others, all other property values and their percentages staying the same. Now, we know that's not going to happen. Home values have continued to increase. We're probably going to see home values increase somewhere around 10%. So that $190 is probably going to be something close to 200, to 250, 260 by the time it's all said and done, maybe a little bit more. So that's what we know as of today, but we do look at, look at what the tax impact's going to be, but that's increasing the levy to the levy limit and addressing all of the things we just mentioned in the budget. Plus, other things we need to allocate funds for, such as state and county charges, an overlay reserve for exemptions and abatements, all that's covered within that levy. In addition to the levy, we'll be increasing our. Local receipts by $447,615 in various areas. Mainly, the main area is increasing motor vehicle tax based on previous history. But between local receipts and the revenue from property taxes, those are the main areas that had increased to help fund the increase to the budget. State aid was level funded at $17,449,642.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions, residents? Nope. Committee with any questions?
I think it's maybe just worth, worth noting that, you know, as a committee, we've been through these budgets pretty good detail. You know, with all the different department heads that we've met over the last few months. Really, really picked them apart and asked, you know, a lot of good questions, and, you know, to see this all come together now, to be at this point is, is just, is just a phenomenal undertaking, so it's good.
Yeah, yeah. The last couple of months, we've been meeting pretty regularly with department heads, like you said, so. Are there any additional questions at this time?
Can we just, the one on the, on the DPW side where, Richard, how, how much? I guess have you allocated for the potential debt there?
So in the general fund, we have allocated $1,799,997. We've allocated $1,245,000 in principal. We've allocated $554,997 for interest. In addition, we've put into debt service for water and for sewer, $146,877 in each of those enterprise funds. Bringing the total debt service for the new DPW facility up to $293,750. So that would pay for a bond issue of $25 million. When we originally did this, when I originally started doing the budget and looking at bond issues, debt, for the debt service for it. We were looking at an interest rate at the time of 1.8%, a little over that, true interest cost. Since then, in the 200, in the $2,093,000 was. Interest payment we had in the debt schedule. I think it was the second year, because the first year is always a little bit less. Since then, the interest rates look like they're going to, the, the, the financial advisor for the town, when I talked to her yesterday, has us now closer to 3%. A little over 3%. Based on what a borrowing would be for next year. Now, she doesn't know, but that's just what they're looking at. She sent me a bunch of sheets with yields and things like that, so. She projected the true interest cost to be closer to 3%. So that bumped up the, the debt service, but we're still okay at $293,000. And we're just not going to see the decline as fast in the, in the out years, but it's still, it's still a safe amount. She said she, she likes to be conservative anyways, but I think we'll be okay.
So, so if, if the new DPW. And the construction of that isn't something that is passed. It's essentially $2 million of funds that we have as a surplus, but I think that there's also some renovations potentially that would be done in lieu of that, I would imagine, right?
So, work, just working through the scenarios, if it doesn't, if it passes, then let's take the good news first.
Right.
Let's say it passes, they'll finalize all the bid documents, we'll go out to bid in January. We'll award a contract, we'll borrow the $25 million, we'll hold back on, you know, we'll use the reserve funds last, so if any is not spent, it can get turned back. But we'll, we'll borrow the funds, we'll get the funding in place, we'll undertake the project. Hopefully, the bids come in less than what we're projecting. If it does not pass, then there's. $1.7 million in the general fund that can be reallocated for other projects or other priorities. That will, that will go over. There's plenty of things that we can do from a capital side. But what I would strongly recommend, that the $1.7 million be put into the DPW facility, because we can't not do anything, right? And even the 1.7 is not going to do enough. So it'll just be putting money into the facility, probably good money into bad, a bad facility. But that's what I would recommend. So if it fails, I don't, I hope everyone doesn't think there's going to be 1.7 million in a tax reduction. Or less tax increase, we're going to need it. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. Where are we? We're looking for a motion on Article Four.
Motion to adopt.
Okay. Okay, I got a motion in a second. Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Lavassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazemorian?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well, 6-0. Okay, Article Five?
Article Five is the Sewer Enterprise Fund budget. Sewer Enterprise Fund overall budget between direct expenses and indirect expenses is increasing $45,470. Salaries are actually decreasing $14,801 based on not having any sick leave buybacks to share in the budget as we did last year. Operating budgets, operating expenses are increasing $30,650. The main area that we're seeing an increase is in Lowell Sewer Assessment. We haven't seen the final bill for this year, so next year is just a projection. We hope we have enough in that budget. There's been no change to capital outlay. And indirect expenses, the allocations which I mentioned earlier, have increased $31,301. There is no rate increase for sewer rates in FY '23. And that's been at least the third year, I think, that we've not seen an increase.
Okay, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee?
I'll ask a question that I know I asked before. Connection fees. Last fiscal year, we projected 250. Same thing this year. Did we collect 250 last year?
Let's look at that.
I know they're going to be going down as more people connect. It's going to be less people to connect.
Collected 127,550 in FY '21. So we're still a little high in our projection. But we've talked about reviewing our connection fees for all our utilities and hope to do that prior to the end of this fiscal year, ready for next fiscal year.
Any other questions? Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
Motion in a second. Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lavassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazemorian?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well, it's unanimous. Article Six.
Make sure I can see it on TV. Article Six is the The Water Enterprise Fund includes two budgets, the water distribution budget and the water filtration budget, which is the water treatment plant. Salaries for the Water Enterprise Fund decreased $8,220. Again, because of retirements that occurred last year. We had terminal leave. But similar to the Sewer Enterprise Fund, employees did get a 2 1/4% increase to which increases to longevity and other contractual obligations. But because of those buybacks for vacation and sick leave, the actual impact to salaries was a decrease. There was an increase to expenses of, operating expenses of $83,371 combined for the Water Enterprise Funds. Distribution, we had a $10,000, a little over $10,000 increase in maintenance and repairs. Under the water filtration, the major increase that we saw was, had to do with chemicals for the plant, $30,667 based on the amount of usage of the plant and pumping, plus the cost of chemicals increasing caused that to have an increase. And then residual disposal increased, $52,290. And that's the plant sludge that we need to dispose of. The cost of that has increased. The indirect costs or the allocations for water increased, as I mentioned before, $78,599. And the projected water rates for FY '23 will not increase. And again, we have not increased water rates.
All right, thank you. Any questions from residents? Any questions from the committee? Motions?
Motion to adopt.
Dave?
I'll second.
Richel, changing it up. Roll call vote. Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Lavassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazemorian?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well, 6-0. Article Seven.
Article Seven is the Stormwater Enterprise Budget. We're seeking to $118,910 for the Stormwater Enterprise Budget. This budget is $58,500 less than the previous year. Expenses are $43,500 less than the previous year. There are no salaries in this budget. There are no allocations in this budget. This budget strictly addresses stormwater permit compliance, maintenance of the drainage system and the stormwater system, and capital improvements. There is a decrease in capital expenditures by $15,000. The stormwater budget continues to provide stormwater permit compliance maintenance. The fee has remained $75 per residential. And the capital that we're appropriating in this budget is for the Bayberry culvert that we are in the process of fixing, as well as funds for culvert. Do you want to, is that the system-wide? Yeah, the system-wide review of culverts in the community. The reason for the decrease is we had to decrease our revenue projection because we were short in our collections in the previous year, so we adjusted.
Okay. Any questions from residents? Any questions from the committee?
Just one, actually.
Yeah, please.
Richard, so you said that we reduced, is it because we didn't collect the fees from residents? Or because there just wasn't enough? We overbilled?
Yeah, it was, last year was our first year with the stormwater fee. So everything was based on assumptions on what they were going to be. And they just, we didn't collect 100%, but we just were short in our revenue projection. We should have given ourselves more. We'll run.
Any other questions? All right, any motions?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
All right, Dave, Rich. All right, Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Lavassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazemorian?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. Unanimous. Article Eight.
Yeah, Cable TV Enterprise Fund was seeking to appropriate $581,232. This is a decrease of $23,086 from the previous year. The main expense in the appropriation for telemedia in FY '23 is a capital expenditure of $229,500 that we're seeking to appropriate. And that's for new, an upgrade and replacement of town hall meeting cameras, switcher, and audio equipment for this room and the small meeting room. Salaries had an increase of, for the 2 1/4% cost of living. And that was really the biggest change.
Okay. Any questions from residents? Any questions from the committee? I have a question. So will people be able to hear us when they're in the hall next year if we get this upgrade to equipment?
Nodding his head.
My other question is, the stuff we display up here, can you actually see it on your TV? Yeah, okay. Only if you have a newer TV, maybe. All right, excellent. Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Dave, Richel. All right, roll call vote. Ms. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Lavassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazemorian? Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. Article Nine.
Article Nine is the, is a capital budget article. Transfer from the Stabilization Fund in the amount of $1,635,185. It covers three areas, DPW, fire, facilities, and grounds. We're seeking to transfer $575,000 to the DPW to purchase a 550-class dump truck with plow package, $110,000. A new six-wheel dump truck with plow package, $230,000. I just want to switch for a second, see if I can do this. Just give you an idea that we're replacing a 1999 six-wheel dump with plow package. We're replacing a 2006 to 8-yard sander, $20,000. We're replacing a 2006 F-550, $110,000. And a 1989 aerial lift bucket truck, $215,000. For the fire department, we're replacing $770,000 for a new fire engine to replace one of the PS engines. That's one of the engines we received from Texas years back when we had to scramble and replace fire trucks because of the undercarriage rusting out. And $25,000 living area at the Salt Fire Station. Under facilities and grounds, we're looking at a landscape dump truck with sander and plow package, $135,185. The truck they currently have isn't big enough to push the snow on the streets that they plow. They are responsible for Livingston Street area and street area as well as the housing authority area. And the truck they have just isn't big enough. And then the police department, we're looking to upgrade to the roll call room encompassing and parts of the area, $130,000. So the total amount that we're taking out of the stabilization fund is $1,635,185. There is currently $11,425,414 in the stabilization fund. We'll still have $9,790,229 in the stabilization fund. And again, all of these funds will have the balances in the handout.
Sorry, all these, say that again, my last statement?
All of the funds I'm talking about, the stabilization fund, the balances and how much we're taking out of them will be in the handout.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee?
Just a comment. I think folks can certainly see that we get the most out of our vehicles. Replacing a 23-year-old six-wheel dump truck in 1999. You can get antique plates for that now, I think. So I'll make a motion to
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
All right, Rich. Rich. Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Lavassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazemorian?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, it's unanimous. Article Ten.
Article Ten seeks to transfer $985,000 from Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings to purchase the following capital items. The first, as you can see from this sheet, is to replace a 2013 Ford F-150, $30,000. That will be 50% cost shared between the Water Enterprise Fund and the Sewer Enterprise Fund, so you'll see this in the next article also. And then $230,000 to replace a 1996 six-wheel dump truck with plow package. The water, Sewer Enterprise Funds will fund 50% of that, so that'll be, that'll be $115,000. Just going into further capital. Sewer is looking to undertake $250,000 in infiltration and inflow controls. 200 of that is pipe repair and replacement. And then manhole repair and adjustment is $50,000. Pump station improvements, we're looking to spend $590,000 for design and construction to install inline grinders at the Monroe and Regina Drive pump station. Station upgrades at the Walmart pump station. And then a facility assessment of equipment and controls to ensure performance of the pump stations. So that's the sewer capital. And I just want to note the sheets that I have on the screen are all within the town's capital improvement plan, which is online, which was provided to the Board of Selectmen, to the Finance Committee that we all reviewed in the previous meeting. And it provides some good detail and information on these articles.
All right, thank you. Any questions from residents? Any questions from the committee?
I just have one question. Chemical grout manholes on Fifth Street Soil Lane and Ames Pond subcatchments. What is a chemical grout manhole?
Want to hit that?
Thank you. So the chemical grouting process is when they go inside the manhole. Where there's cracks and things, the water's leaking in, and they grout it to seal that so that the infiltration is stopped.
So it's like tiling your bathroom?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Just, Mr. Chambers, just quickly, I just want to mention the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings has $6,699,211. If we spend this 985 that's being proposed, we'll have $5,714,211 left in retained earnings. We will be using a portion of that to help offset debt within the Sewer Enterprise Fund. But we'll still have a healthy amount in our retained earnings.
Okay. Any other questions on Article Ten? Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
Dave, Rich, all right, roll call vote. Ms. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Lavassier?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazemorian?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well, it's unanimous. Article Eleven, which you already sort of talked about a little bit.
Article Eleven, we're seeking to transfer $2,070,000 from water retained earnings to the following capital. Currently in water retained earnings, we have a balance of $2,271,795. If this is approved, the balance will be $201,795. There'll be two vehicles that will be split 50% with the Sewer Enterprise Fund. That's the replacement of a 2013 water Ford F-150 and a 1996 six-wheel dump truck with plow package. The total cost is $230,000. The other projects for water, we're looking to do our normal hydrant replacement program, $120,000, $5,000. The meter replacement program, we already have that funded in an article, so that's not being asked at town meeting. Water distribution, $750,000 we're using Opera Funds for, as you can see on this sheet. The only other cost that we have as part of this article is the $3.6 million construction of a catwalk repair on the Ames Astle Street water tank. We're looking to move all the carriers off the catwalk into the top of the tank. We're looking to paint the tank, undertake any other improvements and maintenance. And the total estimated cost of that project is $3,600,000. total estimated cost of that project is $3,600,000. We're using $1.8 million from water retained earnings to help pay for that project, and then in the next article, there's a borrowing of $1.8 million to fund the rest of the project.
All right, thank you. Any questions from residents? Seeing none. Any questions from the committee?
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask a question, just so residents know. Lifespan of a fire hydrant. How often do we have to replace them?
At least 25 years.
So 25, at least 25 years, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
I'll, I'll second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well, unanimous. Article 12.
Article 12 is the borrowing of the 1.8 million to, as the other part of the, $3.6 million for the Astle Street tank.
Thank you. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee?
Just, just one, so, Richard, on the, how, how long approximately is the borrowing?
So for borrowing of this size, it's going to be 10 years.
10 years, okay.
Borrowing for the DPW project would be 20. But for smaller ones, we really like to only go about 10.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any motions?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Rich, all right, roll call vote, Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, it's unanimous.
Article 13 is the standard article we've had each of the past years. We're using part of a bond premium to reduce exempt debt in town this year, based on the amortization schedule we have, we're asking to transfer $44,833 to reduce town exempt debt.
Okay, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee? Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
Dave? Rich? Roll call vote, Ms. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, unanimous. Article 14.
Article 14 seeks, different than what's online, we adjusted this funding down $2,000. We're looking to appropriate a sum of $28,000 from Community Preservation Fund, undesignated, to fund 15 new benches for the town common, the metal benches that we will, we will install. The $28,000 includes the 15 benches, plus installing looming and seating of the benches. They're metal benches that we will purchase from the state bid list and replace the ones we currently have.
Thank you, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee? Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, unanimous.
I should have mentioned, Mr. Chairman, on all the Community Preservation Fund articles tonight, the Community Preservation Committee met last night and approved them.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
The next article is seeking $157,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, Undesignated Reserve, to upgrade, purchase new equipment and upgrade the skateboard park at Saunders Recreation Complex. This project entails $30,000 for new ramps and equipment, $81,000, a little over $81,000 for new pavement, $34,900 to, and we have a contingency of a little over $9,717. As everyone knows, that park, if anyone's down at Livingston, probably the most used area is the skateboard park. And they do a good job taking care of the area, but the equipment's getting old, pavement's getting old, and we want to upgrade the entire complex to improve its use and to make sure it's safe. We hope to stop that work in the early fall, so the, so the users don't lose the summer, but we want to get everything in place and get things ordered. We're finding that getting things, you know, taking months and weeks, so, once this is passed, we'll get a jump on everything.
Okay. Any resident questions? Any questions from the committee?
Just one, actually, how, how often do we fund the skate park, or, or just in areas in general, down at Livingston Park, in terms of upkeep? I mean, obviously, there's regular upkeep maintenance, but, you know, this is obviously a bit of a project.
Yeah, I mean, this, since I've been here, nothing's been done to the park, I think we added that, I don't even know what they call it, half-pike, half-pipe, whatever they call it, we call it, we actually bought that from the town of Andover, they bought a new one, or they gave that to us, so, not to, we haven't done anything there, the playground was updated maybe seven or eight years ago. We, you know, we do, we do a walkthrough of all the areas to make sure there, you know, there's no issues, but we really, until we, until we got a facilities manager, we really haven't started looking to get a list of what needs to be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Dave and Rich. Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, unanimous. Article 16.
Article 16, this is, again, a different amount than what's on the, on the website, which we'll update tomorrow. This is based on pricing we received in the last couple of days. It's $45,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, Undesignated Reserve, to purchase and install bleachers for the football field at Livingston Recreation Complex. The current bleachers that exist at the football field are hazard, so between the youth football and the facilities and grounds manager, we, you know, determine that they should be replaced. The bleachers themselves will cost $35,000, and to demolish the concrete pad and remove the existing bleachers is $10,000. The size bleachers that we're looking at, I think the net amount of people that can hold of around 58 to 60 people.
Any idea what the current one holds? Probably zero, right, because it's broken down?
No, the, the one that exists today is, is falling apart and is rickety, and, you know, people are actually slipping, falling through the, the openings of, as you walk up the, the bleachers.
Okay.
It's a, it's been a hazard, we've had a couple entries down there.
And this is, and this is another item that's going to take, I thought, maybe like 11 weeks to order, so, once, once we get approval on these things, we're going to get going, so.
Okay, any questions from residents? Any questions from the committee? Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
Motion?
I should not second that one. I'll second.
Jason with a second, Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 17.
Article 17 is a standard article each year, $25,000 from the overlay surplus to fund the veterans and senior tax relief work program. It's because of COVID, but we hope to get back soon with that program, and based on some funding we still have because of COVID, we hope to provide opportunities for more seniors than normal.
Okay, any questions from residents? Any questions from the committee? Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
Motion, second, Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazenborean?
Aye.
And Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well, unanimous. Article 18.
This is the standard article to approve the Affordable Housing Trust Allocation Plan. Currently, there's $5,315,555 in the fund. It also outlines how we'd use the fund for the creation of new units or buy down of existing units. There are no plans at the moment, but this just brings forward the plan for approval at town meeting.
Okay, any questions from residents? Any questions from the committee?
No.
Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
Dave, Rich. Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous. Article 19.
Article 19 is the annual community preservation, annual revenues, article that outlines the annual revenues and amounts to be recommended by the committee. Administrative costs, $65,666. There are no plans to, on, on the expenditure of administrative, administrative costs. The open space allocation is 10% of the projected revenue, so it's $131,332. Same for the community housing. The historic preservation funds allocation automatically go to, towards paying the debt service for the town hall renovation, leaving a budget reserve of $984,994. The projected revenue for FY '23 is $1,313,326.
Okay, any questions from residents? Any questions from the committee?
Motion to adopt.
Dave, Rich with a second, Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, unanimous. Article 20.
Article 20 is an article that the Board of Selectmen have brought forward to seek a home rule petition to increase the exemptions for seniors who qualify under Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17D. They want to increase that exemption from $175 to $500, and they also want to increase the qualifications for those who are eligible for the, for the exemption. $1,000 to $55,000, which I need to add to the executive summary, which I will. The, this will allow some of the more needy seniors to take advantage of this exemption. We currently have, on average, 24 residents who take advantage of the exemption. If we triple that amount...
What I want to know is, how in the hell did you guys start talking about that?
Susan, we're getting some feedback. Sorry, where were you?
So if you take that 24, average of 24, under the current eligibility requirements, because we're expanding the eligibility, and let's say we triple that amount to 72, at $500, the cost would be $30,000 a year, which will take out of the overlay. The article also gives the selectmen the ability to increase both the eligibility requirements, as well as the exemption amounts, each year not to exceed 5%. That way, we can, they can look at it each year and keep up with inflation.
Okay, thank you, any questions from residents? Any question from the committee?
No.
Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, unanimous. Article 21.
Article 21 is another home rule petition that the Board of Selectmen are bringing forward to allow the town to exceed the statutory limits for the exemptions for veterans from $400 to $600. This exemption does not have any eligibility requirements or thresholds for being eligible. If you're a veteran, you would receive it if you apply. Right now, this, the article is similar to the previous article, where it gives the selectmen the ability to increase the amount up to 5% on an annual basis to keep up with inflation. Right now, we have 220 veterans who take advantage of the exemptions. If we increase the amount to $600, the cost annually will go from $88,000 to $2,000 a year, a difference of $44,000, which, again, will be funded through the overlay.
Okay, any questions from residents? Any questions from the committee? Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, unanimous. Article 22.
Article 22 is asking town meeting to authorize the selectmen to accept, accept an easement from MDR Construction for a sewer line on property that is on the former police station lot, which is right here on Main Street, they're building, I believe, 19 apartments. The sewer line that currently exists need to, needs to be moved, and in order to move it, we need, move the sewer line, we need to accept an easement for the new sewer line to go in.
Okay. Any questions from residents? Any from the committee? Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous. Article 23.
Article 23 is to terminate an existing easement for the sewer line that we just talked about. The, since we're moving the sewer line, the old sewer line easement can be terminated.
All right, any questions from residents? From the committee? Any motions?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Levasseer?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Hazenborean?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous. All right, we already took Article 24 out of order. Let's see, so does that bring us to Article 29? I believe Article 29...
Mr. Zoning, Steve?
Mr. Sadwick, please.
Back again for another...
Another round?
Back giving this cat again, huh?
So that we all remember that last year, the zoning article, it was an 89 to 47 vote, but we needed 91 votes, so we lost by two votes. And the committee started meeting in September, conducted 10 meetings from September through February of this year. Three of those meetings were specifically targeted to public input, so there was about 14 changes that occurred in the draft that was at last town meeting compared to what was submitted as the article for this town meeting. And I think what we're going to find is, is that a number of concerns that the residents had back in last May were addressed, that being the question of the fee in lieu of affordable units is now mandated in multifamily, something that we didn't have before. The multifamily developments in the Office Research District was a big issue at town meeting last time, and the committee looked at that and removed that. So, all in all, I, I was pleased with the product that we had last year, but I think this one has even improved over that. And the chairman of the committee, Todd Johnson, apologizes that he couldn't be here tonight. He had something unexpectedly come up, but, you know, Todd will probably make the pitch about something that's 20 years old, that has 100 and 200... that has 133 amendments to it, has had a significant amount of Band-Aids, and it's time for a new model. So, that's what we're kind of rolling out for town. The last thing I just wanted to point out is the planning board does have its public hearing on April 11th. There will be two votes. One will be the recommendation, but they also need to agree to allow the article to come back within a two-year timeframe. So, we did have some discussions with the planning board about that, and we believe that that hurdle should be cleared. There were two planning board members on the committee this last iteration, so we're fairly comfortable that that issue will be, not prevent this from going forward, so.
All right. Thank you for that. Any questions from residents? Seeing none. Any from the committee?
Not a question. Perhaps a recommendation that we should defer until the planning board vote. That way, we're in alignment with...
Yeah. I would agree with that. Anybody have any questions for Steve?
I have one. It's not really a question. It's just in case people are listening. And I saw a number of the meetings you had with residents to address their concerns. If you were to say what the number-one issue was that was corrected, what is that issue?
You know, that fee in lieu of was a really big issue for people because it feeds into the whole 40B issue and affordable housing and everything else. So, when there's units that are supposed to be affordable and the town said, "We end up creating a large bank account, and the units aren't being put on the books because we're not developers." So, what, that puts us at a deficit when it comes to the subsidized housing inventory. So, I think that was probably one of the biggest things that people were looking for, was tightening up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the only thing I was going to ask, you already answered, was do you think you took care of the issues that people were worried about? And I think you already covered that. Okay. But I agree with Dave that, similar to the other article, we should probably defer...
Do we have a scheduled meeting before...
I will schedule one.
What I can propose is we defer to time certain meeting before annual town...
Yeah, well, that's why I... To our next meeting after the planning board meeting. So, it's sort of...
That's fine.
Yeah, because I think we're going to probably schedule one, maybe even virtual or something, just to go through the two articles or something.
That will be my motion.
All right, so the motion is to defer recommendation until our next meeting after the planning board meeting. Do we have a second? Okay. Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. LaSia?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Azamorian?
Aye.
Mr. Christian? And Chair votes aye as well. So, we will defer that to our, probably our next meeting. Similar to the next article, Article 30.
Right, so if Article 29, just like we learned at the last town meeting, if Article 29 is not approved, then Article 30 would be withdrawn because it's a companion to Article 29. It actually implements what's in the new proposed zoning bylaw on the ground by having this new map showing all of the new districts.
Okay. Any questions from residents? Seeing none. Any from the committee?
I'll make the same motion, but I do want to state, I think the work that's been done here is fantastic and long overdue, so my compliments on that.
Thank you. I would agree. Sorry, I know you're in the middle of the motion, but I just wanted to make one plug that there are a number of documents up on the zoning bylaw committee's webpage that show changes that were made from the existing bylaw to the proposed bylaw. There's a list of map changes that are occurring. So, and then there's a comparison of the current bylaw to the new bylaw. So, I think just about any question that someone would have, they could find there on the zoning bylaw committee's webpage.
Long overdue and well done.
So, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Bishop, how do you vote? This is for...
Aye.
Okay. This is for deferring our recommendation to the meeting after the planning board. Ms. LaSia?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Azamorian?
Aye.
Mr. Christian?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. All right, that gets us through the annual town meeting warrant. So, on to the special town. Article 1.
Article 1 is a standard article at May town meeting just to add funding to line items in FY '22 budgets that we anticipate will be in deficit. Before I go into those articles, those line items, and I'll go through them quickly, we're taking funds from principal maturing debt. There is funding available in principal maturing debt because for FY '22, we set aside $1,589,178 in debt service for an intentional project actually going forward this year. But it didn't, so this money wasn't spent. It will be turned back to free cash. So, we have the ability to use funding from that particular line item to help fund these budgets. But as you can see, we'll still turn back over $1 million that will get closed to free cash that could help offset the cost of the DPW facility in October. The funds will go towards these budgets, and I'll go through them quickly. Human resources, professional services, $15,000. We're anticipating that to be short because of the amount of pre-employment physicals that we had to do this year in background checks. Accounting salaries, $50,000 for the payments for retirement of the town accountants past year. Town manager profession, $5,000. I underbudgeted the cost of animal control services that we have with the town of Billerica. Town energy utilities, based on usage, it looks like will be $11,000 short. Town clerk full-time salaries, $20,000 for the retirement buyback of the assistant town clerk. COA repairs and maintenance, $7,000 to purchase a new stove for the COA kitchen. That's an industrial-sized stove. Police overtime, $110,000 based on vacancies and injuries within the department. We anticipate being short $110,000 to cover shifts. Fire full-time salaries to purchase for a buyback of $15,000 for retirement. Overtime will be short $135,000 for covering shifts, again, due to injuries within the department. Fire operating repairs and maintenance, $16,000 just to maintain the trucks and the repairs on the engines that we hope to bring one forward. We will hope to get one approved replacement this year. DPW fleet, gas, diesel, and fuel, $60,000 for the remainder of the year. As we all know, the cost of gas and diesel has increased dramatically over the past few months. Facilities and grounds repairs and maintenance, $20,000 to cover remaining costs within the facilities and grounds departments to maintain our buildings. And Medicare tax, we're going to have a $92,000 shortfall. This tax is based on function of payroll, and because we've had so many details and overtime this year, it just was more than we projected.
Any questions from residents? Any questions from the committee?
Just to comment on the senior center repairs and maintenance, what we learned from our last meeting. The stove that they're replacing is the stove that was in the old senior center. So, it's at least 23 years old? Something like that. So, it's well over...
It's probably time. Any other questions or comments? Any motions?
Motion to adopt. I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Ms. Bishop, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. LaSia?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Azamorian?
Aye.
Mr. Christian? Chair votes aye as well. It's unanimous.
Article 2 transfers the remaining amount of free cash that we set aside for snow and ice deficits, which is $600,000 to the snow and ice budget,